Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, December 7th, 2015 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order and request roll call, please.
Bollig. Carpenter.
Here.
Staten.
Here.
Brethauer.
Here.
Poole.
Here.
Burnier.
Here.
Thank you. We'll go to item three, which is the swearing in of Police Officer Jeremy Larson, and we will do the oath in just a minute. Officer Uo would like to... Chief, I'm sorry, Chief Uo. Oops. Did I tell you I didn't want you today?
It happens that fast, man.
Would like to make a few comments first.
Alright, thanks. Good evening. On behalf of the Oregon Police Department, I wish to welcome you to the oath of office ceremony for Officer Jeremy Larson. The mission of the Oregon Police Department is to safeguard the lives and property of the people we serve, to reduce the incidence of fear of crime, and enhance public safety, while working with a diverse community to improve their quality of life. Our objective is to do so with honor, integrity, while at all times conducting ourselves with the highest ethical standards to maintain public trust and confidence. The men and women of the Oregon Police Department promote a safe environment through police and citizen interaction, and by the equitable enforcement of laws of the Village of Oregon, the State of Wisconsin, within the framework of the Constitution of the United States. We are committed to working together as a team by being innovative, professional, responsible to the public safety concerns of our citizens and to those who travel through our community. Becoming a police officer for the Village of Oregon is no easy undertaking. The extensive hiring processes included a written examination, three oral interviews, one before field trainers, one before members of the command staff, and one before the police commission. The selected candidates then undergo a very lengthy and rigorous background investigation and a physical and psychological examination. Through this process, we have created an organization staff by highly motivated, dedicated, and competent personnel, and we are pleased that Jeremy is about to pledge his commitment to become a valued and respected member of the Oregon Police Department. Jeremy currently resides in Monticello with his wife Abby and their four-year-old daughter Lexi, who are all here tonight, I see. They are also expecting a new baby boy this February, so congratulations to you guys. Jeremy graduated in 2011 from Madison Area Technical College with an associate's degree in criminal justice. Jeremy has previous law enforcement experience in his work for the Brooklyn Police Department, the Belleville Police Department, and the Blue Mountains Police Department. Jeremy enjoys hunting, fishing, sports, and other outdoor activities. Jeremy also enjoys spending time with his family and friends and is dedicated to his career. We believe Jeremy has all the right attributes to be an outstanding member of the Oregon Police Department, and we are looking forward to working with Jeremy for many years to come. I would now ask that our board president, Steve Staten, please step forward to formally deliver the oath of office to Officer Jeremy Larson, Oregon Police Department's newest police officer.
Now step right up here, please. Okay. So the officer may have told you had to memorize this, but you don't. Okay, so please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Jeremy L. Larson, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America."
"I, Jeremy L. Larson, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America."
"The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin, the charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon."
"The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin, the charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon."
"The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department."
"The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department."
"And the law enforcement code of ethics."
"And the law enforcement code of ethics."
"And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department."
"And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department."
"I will assume my duties as of November 30, 2015."
"I will assume my duties as of November 30, 2015."
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Officer? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Sure.
He missed the handshake. Okay, we need to get signatures here. Why don't I take this first? I'll sign it. Anybody you'd like to come up and get in the picture, please.
Yeah.
Relax.
Jeremy, if you'd use the electric.
Yep. Changing my double.
I don't know.
What?
Thanks for the cookies.
Someone brought them by today, I don't know.
Thank you.
If you had a little five-year hooks chittering on top of your ass.
Good to see you.
Okay, that takes us to item four. The Village Board may adjourn into closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851E to discuss a possible use of tax increment financing for a hotel on TIF number four. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Udro?
Yes.
Burnier?
Yes.
Thanks. We'll go into closed session, and we'll go across the hallway here. Good evening, everyone. This is a continuation of a Village of Oregon Board meeting. We just came back from closed session. We are at item number six, public appearances. The first is item A, discussion possible action possibly providing economic development grant or loan for Brad Willie's new business in Business Park. Welcome, Brad.
And Steve. That's one of the things I put in your...
Yeah.
Seat there.
We have information in our place.
Actually, I've got another thing to pass out.
Okay, that's fine. Go right ahead, Brad.
I don't have too many.
We can share.
I just gave them.
Just that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Want me to pass it down?
Sure.
Actually, I don't.
Okay.
Oh, same kind. Okay. Okay, thanks.
I have my first copy.
Alright, well, what I learned from the last time we were here is it's a pretty big hole that needs to be filled over there. So it was kind of depressing, to be honest with you, to see how much it was going to cost, but kinda is what it is. So we got two quotes. Well, actually, I have three or four, but I only have two as of right now. Still waiting here for one from Mance and then Mall. But yeah, these are South Central, and that's the one that you guys should already have. And then Manona Plumbing and Fire Protection. So they both came in around $150,000, which was quite the shock. And then, of course, we still have that one from Parisia, $350,000, which is absurd. So yeah, that's kind of where we're at. And there's kind of a rough site plan there. I didn't want Jeff to get too detailed with it yet until I knew if this was actually going to be a possibility. Because quite frankly, with all the earthwork, without some type of assistance, we'll probably be going to Brooklyn. It's expensive. So... Yeah, it's just a big hole. It's really low there. So... And still working with Pat Lyon on the purchase, and he knows that everything's kind of contingent on this earth moving, so...
And the board should be aware that if Brad goes ahead with the project, we have to do an amendment to the comp plan because this is in plant industrial.
Yep.
And to put what Brad wants to do has got to be in general industrial. And I know you reached out to Pat Lyons to see if he could buy other property, which is zone GI up there, but they don't want to sell it. So I think we're comfortable with going through the comp plan process and making it a usable space out there.
He actually did say that they might be interested in it after a later conversation.
Oh, okay.
But he says it's not likely. He still hasn't talked to his brother.
Yeah.
Because this would be the piece of land just to the west of the concrete plant, which is a perfect site, but they want to use it potentially for their own use in the future. So they don't want to get rid of it yet. So it's kind of the only... As far as I know, that's the only available location in Oregon. I've looked for places to rent, and there's nothing suitable for a truck shop in town. So it's either build one, go to Madison, or be in Brooklyn, so...
So questions for the board?
As a source of funding, can you identify?
So we cannot provide TIF anymore because the expenditure period has expired. So it'd have to be an economic development grant from the village to Brad. And then our idea is that the TIF II is going to close in the next couple of years, that we would use some of that TIF distribution back to the village to then pay the loan off.
And what's the size of the lot, Brad?
It's about... Well, the total lot, I think, is like nine acres or something, but the majority of it's wetland. But there's only three or three and a half buildable, so...
And how much is Pat Lyons selling you the land for?
It looks like around $150,000.
So how does that square up, like, in terms of cost per acre? I'm not familiar with the numbers.
In the business part?
Is that the fair market value of nine acres, of three acres of developable land?
Probably it's a little bit less.
So...
What he has sold in the past, I believe.
Yeah. So here's my concern. So we gave Pat TIF money to buy and build on that lot that he's on. Am I right?
No, no. We didn't give anything... Lightcon paid us money. Don't talk about Pat Lyons from Lightcon. No, they gave us money.
They didn't get any TIF money to do the construction or to buy any of that land in the business park?
Nope.
Alright. If we don't give Brad $150,000, and it isn't just Brad, it's anybody that would want to develop on that three acres, would need about $150,000 to fill it in before they could start developing, right?
Yep.
Then that land doesn't have a... Doesn't really have a value of $150,000 for the three acres, right? I mean, three acres of wetland is three acres of wetland, right? You can't get a return on investment of wetland.
Yeah, so it's a challenging lot. I agree.
Yeah. So in a way, it sounds like we're kind of compensating Pat to sell property that he's in a profit on. And I have a little bit of a concern with that. Brad aside, I appreciate your project. I think it's a great project. I'm hoping that that project goes in in Oregon. I just want to make sure that the taxpayers are getting a return on their investment and that we're not unduly enriching somebody to sell land that doesn't have value otherwise.
I think when you look at... And maybe I'm wrong about this. Maybe Brad can help me. When I think when you look at these estimates, like the one that I handed out this evening, I mean, when I look at it, I'd look at it not... I mean, the whole site is $150,000. But basically, the South Central contracting is about $67,520 to do the compacted fill. Jeff, you hear that?
Yes, I have. That's what I was thinking as well.
Yeah, so I mean, that total is to get the site ready for the building. So anybody's going to have to do that. I'm looking at the, I call the exceptional cost of building on that lot, which is about $70,000. It's kind of halfway down the list there, so...
Yeah, I'm still focused, though, on...
I'm not just hearing what you're saying, Jeff. I'm just saying that I don't think I would say it's $150,000, I think, because that's total site preparation.
And then I have even compared it with some land in Verona and stuff like that. Verona, Fitchburg, which I mean, that's all just ridiculously expensive per acre. I think it's $75,000 to $100,000 an acre in those areas. Comparatively to that, I think it's a relatively decent price, but I do see what you're saying, too. I get it, so...
Brad, are you looking for this whole piece, the whole $150,000 to come from the village? Is that your request?
I'm willing to look into whatever the village is going to offer, so... And that's kind of what I'm going to base my decision off of. So if you guys come back with like $50,000, I have to go talk with the bank some more and see what they're going to say, but I think that that wouldn't be enough for us. I just don't think I can afford it, so...
Brad, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to... Just the land cost here, if you're paying $50,000 an acre to the seller, and then we got a $67,520 cost to fill, that basically, if you add that together, that brings us to about $72,500 per developable acre, because we're talking three developable acres.
Yep.
So that, in a sense, that's the land cost, as I see it.
I was going to ask you, what is your projected value of your building when it's done? Do you know?
Well, I was thinking it was going to be... My initial plan was all said and done, $500,000, but that isn't going to happen. It's going to be three-quarters of a million or more, the way it looks. So... And I don't know if I can afford that. So that's kind of why I'm here, so...
Jeff, go ahead. Just note that it says install select imported compacted fill in a 124-feet-by-180-foot area. That's actually less than one acre.
Correct. Yeah, what... Yeah, I guess I should clarify that. What they quoted was kind of the Phase One and Phase Two of the building area, if you can see that. So yeah, that's just the quotes that I received just to do basically half of the site plan that Jeff drew. So to do the whole thing, it is probably more like $300,000.
So Mike, you said this is a challenging site. That was the same thing with...
I was going to say that.
And we provided financial assistance there through the TIF.
Correct.
Because we wanted that site developed, but it might not be.
Right.
And that turned out great. And this seems to have some similar factors with it, that we have to look at, I think, some amount of help in order to get this site developed.
Yeah.
Otherwise, nothing's going to happen. Whoever comes in next is going to ask for the same thing, right?
Unless they get just... Unless at some point, way in the future, Lightcon just says, "I'm going to discount the property because I want to get rid of it."
Yeah.
It'd be the last remaining lot out there.
Yeah.
Possible.
Who knows how long that takes? Other thoughts?
Brad, none of this has gone through the planning commission, has it? The site plan or anything?
No. No. No.
And then how many employees do you think you need to have?
Well, currently, we have four. If we come up here, I mean, we're going to start out with probably five or so. I'd like to add another person. And then, I mean, the goal is to be the biggest and the best. That's the ultimate goal, so I don't want to... I look at some businesses, and some people are happy, one-man show, two-man show, they're happy at that. Me, I'm not quite content with that until we're the biggest and the best around. That's kind of the way that I look at it. Sometimes kind of a curse, but I do want to provide a good... I want to be a good business in the community, have a lot of tax dollars coming back. I do want to provide a lot of jobs, so... How many? To start, we'll probably be in the five to six range, so... And then go from there.
So my idea is that Brad's coming to our staff meeting, our planning staff meeting next Monday, to talk about the whole comp plan and zoning issue. And so that's on the 14th, so then I just asked Matt, we could then... The board could go into closed session on 21st to talk about this. Because I think it will spark negotiations. And then by then, Brad could maybe have the other estimate or estimates he could send to me.
Yeah.
So it'll be next two Mondays, we can sort of deal with this.
Okay.
One at the staff level, and then one at the board level, if that makes sense.
Does that sound okay, as a way we can proceed?
Yeah.
Come back with more detail and go over there. So one thing I want to comment, I know we're not negotiating yet, maybe shouldn't say it yet, but I have a lot of interest in this project. I've known Brad for a long time. He's a very solid person. It's the kind of business person we want in Oregon, and would be a great asset to have here. And he will run the biggest and best, would be my guess. I'd be shocked if that wasn't the case. So how that translates into dollars, I don't know, but I'm clearly interested in giving assistance to get here if we can do it with our due diligence. So that's where I would stand with Brad. I'm one person, not a seven, but we will see. So we'll plan on some more meetings of staff, coming back to us, and start to narrow things down.
Perfect.
Anything else from trustees? Anything over here? Okay. I can give you what you need?
I think so. We'll move forward. Tomorrow morning, I actually have a meeting with another builder to get some more pricing on the whole project with construction and the building itself, to see what that's going to be, so...
One quick question.
Yeah.
So Brad, you were saying that the cost of fill and prep work was really half, Phase One, you called it, and then you called it half the site?
Yep.
So if you were to get in there on Phase One, how would you plan to develop the rest of the land for Phase Two?
Well, I figured if we were ready to go on for Phase Two, I'd hope that I would have some more cash in the wallet to afford it. I mean, that's kind of my thought process right now, so... I want to build something that's sustainable. I don't want to build the whole thing now, because I think that's just digging yourself in a big hole that's tough to get out of. So I want to do something that I know we could succeed with, and then expand from there as we can, so...
The other questions are finished? Okay, good. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You, too.
So we're still on public appearances, item B, discussion with John and Doris Dietz regarding one entry South Main Street, the Peaceful Heart business, basement water issue, and possible board action or direction, so... Welcome.
Hi. Hi.
So if you want to go ahead with some explanation, please?
Okay. We tried to put as much as we could in the memo that we gave you with the background, so I won't go into all the background. We've had high-level water since last September coming in with rainstorms. So it started out August, September-ish, and it was coming in enough that I had to go down in any rainstorm with a shop vac and vacuum out the basement, and stay there until the rainstorm was over, and about maybe an hour after. It got worse and worse. When winter came, it actually stopped. So once we got into the dead of winter, we stopped getting water. And then when spring came, it got worse, significantly worse. And so we actually had Badger Basement come in, put in a heavy-duty sump pump, put in drain tile around the wall that the water's coming in through as a temporary stopgap. I mean, it was kind of a Band-Aid on the symptom, but we didn't... There's no way I could go there every time it rained and stay in the basement, shop vac in. And it was to the point where I was carrying, dumping, carrying, dumping to try and keep up.
Yeah, and so I had talked to Mark Elow, and he, I think, had taken steps to look at a box that was back, I think, on UW property. It was, I don't know what you call it, but it's cement box. And he thought that that might be an issue because it had been old and kind of falling apart. And so he had gotten to the point where they were about to do the work, but then went and talked to UW, and UW decided that they would go ahead and do the repair work to it. But then it went to May before they could do that. So once they did that, there was... We were waiting to see if there's any improvement in the amount of, the volume of water that was coming in. And there wasn't, so then I think we just were kind of waiting to see what would happen with that box. And then Mark, I think, left, and then Jeff has replaced Mark. And so we met with Jeff, and he is okay with looking at, I think, the front box, which is on South Main Street, but wasn't comfortable with committing to looking at anything else that may be on private property. And so, you know, it seems like the Thieves, they are now the new owners of Phil's property, and they seem willing and interested to look at this situation. And I think everyone's willing to cooperate, but we would like to have also the village looking at the whole thing with us as a whole, because it may be one thing, it may be two things, and if we all look at things piecemeal, we could all spend a lot of money and never really fix the whole issue or the whole problem. So that's what we were hoping, to get some assistance, just looking at what could be the problem. And then, like with Mark, we would say, "Well, it could be this. Let's look at this. Okay. Let's look at the next thing. Let's look at the next thing." And so we just were wanting just to help evaluating what's really going on.
So questions? This is all on private property, right?
The front box is not on private property, but the stormwater drain that runs along our building, which we kind of wonder, we'd like somebody to help us evaluate, is it really too close to the building? Does it need to be relocated? Do we need an additional one? Is it being overwhelmed with the runoff? Because there seems to be a certain segment of area of also residential property that also kind of runs into some of the area.
So, yeah, there's approximately nine acres that's draining in to that one box in front of our house. House in front of our store, that's all, I guess, but it all kind of floods in. I mean, I've got some conceptual drawings. If you want to see, to kind of see what it looks like, because I don't know if... But it's...
And I think part of the thing that it's more than, it's not just the Thieves property or just the UW property that is utilizing or needing this drainage. So that's why we see it. It's a larger... You know, it's not just between us and the neighbors.
It's a community issue. So if you look at this map, it shows the water... And this is all conceptual. It's me looking visually. This is not an engineering... This is nothing... Jeff didn't provide this. I didn't have an engineer do this. I walked out, walked up South Main Street, said, "Oh, the top of the rise is at State Street. I can see that." And I walked over on UW and looked up, and you can see all the way up the backs of all the properties. I did a visual assessment all the way up north, or South Main Street, and there aren't any drains up there. I went over and looked at all the drain boxes and which way they drain to, and then showed that. So you can see all the water from State Street and the railroad tracks in South Main Street, all comes down that direction. Now, there's a lot of grass here, a lot of it's being absorbed. I'm not trying to portray that there's just flood of water that comes... Now, there's a lot of grass here, a lot of it's being absorbed, I'm not trying to portray that there's just flood of water that comes down there. But it shows you the amount of water. If you get closer to the, the actual UW and the Thiel's property, our property, you can see there's still a series of about five drains that all run into pipes and all run right into that box that's right by the front of our building. Now, we don't know what the problem is, but when you look at this, one of our questions is, did, did anybody do analysis of this before we did the downtown? Did anybody do analysis of this before they put UW in? Did anybody do it before they put the, the power company, you know, lot in? What, what did they find? And was it really sufficient to put that much water into one box like that? And what kind of pressures it putting on this whole area? Whether stormwater drainage or below ground drainage as well, where the water's running below. So it just kind of gives you a conceptual that there's a lot of water moving into that area and it all is going to that box. And it shows why this is really a stormwater issue that's broader than just us and the Thiel's, or us and UW and the Thiel's, because the water coming from this neighborhood's going into that sink basin that's sitting either on the Thiel's property or on the UW property. And then that's going into the drainage system that's actually coming from UW and the Thiel's property out to the public right away. So it's not like we can just say it is an island, one person does something. We all need to participate in doing it, is what we feel like.
Jeff, you have some comments for us?
Just a few comments, because this, this is a, this is an item that has gone on for quite a long time. And coming at it in the last couple of months here with fresh set of eyes, my first inclination when I looked at this was, is there was a significant amount of, of private storm sewers located on private property, and then they do connect into the public storm sewer right in front of the Dietz's business there. You know, I did, I did look through the property files of both of these, and, and, you know, unfortunately, I think both when UW went in, I believe that used to be like a warehouse or something like that back there. When that went in, back when stormwater wasn't treated with as much attention as it, as it is today, I did not find any significant information on the, the systems back there, including this line that runs parallel to the, to the Dietz's parcel and through the Thiel's parcel. I found nothing yet of, of this inlet that's kind of just on the UW parcel connecting into that other pipeline. You know, the history in this line, there was a line out there that was actually thought to be contributing to stormwater in the area, or in the basement's area back in 2009. And there was a significant history, I found, I did find in the old files and packets and minutes and everything, of a lot of discussion that surrounded that. At the time, it would not be my recommendation today, but at the time, there was a decision for the village to line that portion of pipeline that runs along through the Thiel's property and up to the catch basin. That was lined with what we call a CIPP liner, cast in place plastic or polymer pipe. And what it is, it's really just a solid epoxy impregnated resin. Kind of imagine a felt liner that hardens, and it goes, it makes continuous lining all the way along that, that pipeline. And that, I don't understand if, you know, what happened between 2009 and 2014 that would have changed. But it has been videotaped both before they did the liner, after they, they did the liner, and then it was also re-videotaped this last, I believe it was March or April of this year. And the liner looks in great shape. When I met with the, the Dietz's, I explained to them my, my feeling that this appeared to be very much focused on private storm sewers. There, there are private storm sewers throughout our village. There are people who are dealing with water in and around their basement walls with private sump pumps and discharging out to the streets or discharging to dry wells or wherever they may be. And I, I kind of was telling them that it was not really, in my opinion, a village responsibility at this point. They were wanting, they were requesting that the village provide engineering, look for solutions. And my opinion, as it stated in my memo, was that this was a, a private matter. I did let them know that, you know, the, the one thing that we could look at is, is the condition of the sump, or of the catch basin and sump that's right in front of their property. It's brand new, like...
When was the construction downtown?
Two thousand eight. Two thousand eight. It's not very old at all. I mean, I looked at it, I looked at it, it was very, it was full of leaves and stuff when we were there. But I, I told them in the spring we would be able to suck that out and, and probably have someone get lower down into that and take a look at it just to see if there were any kind of cracks or seals. But I am skeptical about that, but it's, it's definitely a possibility. And I told them we would, we would look into that because that is, again, on the public side of things. So, I know that was not kind of what they wanted to hear and, and everything, but I think as a village, you know, there are many different situations throughout the village where we have, we do not have storm sewer in all parts of the village. You know, we have a lot of situations like this where we have overland flow, we have flow that's going long distances, distances down streets. And that's just kind of part of, again, going back to where stormwater has come from, where it's been much more on the forefront now, where it's put in all the streets and it's collected, it's put in underground systems. And they just haven't historically always done that.
Thanks Jeff. Questions here?
Yeah.
Question. We, next year, is it on the schedule to do something on Elm Street? Or are we gonna do Elm Street next year?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it depends if we're doing it due in Jefferson Street. We do, then we'll, that will get bumped a year.
Okay. Were we gonna do anything with the South Main portion from any point up to Elm Street or beyond Elm Street then too?
Yes. Yes.
Is that also, at that point in time, would we be adding storm drain?
No.
Inlets?
No.
No.
That's not part of the plan or design right now.
Okay.
Jeff, is there in fact a utility easement there? And does that impact the, your view on the situation?
You know, I, I, there was one of the issues that was raised up, was raised that the Dietz's were questioning the, whether or not there was an easement there. I did pull out a copy, at least I found a copy of a CSM that was in the file. And it, it shows both an outlot, but it also shows an easement along that portion of the building and along that portion of the property. So it does appear that whenever this was divided under the CSM and, Matt, do you remember, was there a date? Did you get it?
I don't recall.
Okay. It says revised ten twenty-two ninety-seven, so that, on top of this, I don't know if that's, that's handwritten, so it's not an official copy. But it does appear that there was an easement along, along that portion. It's not specifically called out, but it's based in the, what the, the legend shows for easement type. It shows an eight foot easement. And there's also an outlot one sixty-three over there, which we have yet to really kind of get a good read on what that is.
Yeah, I haven't been able to really come to any conclusion about what, if any, easement rights exist with respect to that lateral and who the beneficiary of the easement is. It's our best guess, I guess, that the lateral along the building was installed in connection with the development of the UW Clinic property. Because it appears that when that property was developed, they anticipated a need to capture stormwater, not only on their site, but flowing to their site from the residential area to the south, and to get that out into the village's storm sewer system. So it looks like that's when and why the lateral went in. If that CSM was created in connection with the UW Clinic property?
That would be my guess.
It's, it's possible that they anticipated a need to show an easement there to accommodate that lateral. But the CSM itself doesn't include any real narrative describing who the beneficiary of the easement is or what the purposes of the easement are. It does show an easement at that location.
Are there, are there any other utilities in that area?
The only other utility in that area is the sanitary, which goes from the kind of that center of the parking lot and then goes back into the alley behind the, the South Main businesses.
It's perpendicular to that, right?
Correct. You asked about utilities in the area, and that's, that's also in there in that area.
And there's no indication on the CSM that the easement was conveyed or dedicated to the village. It, it's just, it just says easement in the legend with no description. And our working assumption and understanding has been that, again, UW Clinic chose to put a lateral in, a private lateral connecting to the village's storm sewer in Main Street when they did their building.
I think these were put in by Alliant.
The storm, the storm sewer was put in by Alliant when Alliant owned the building, because they had flooding in the back, didn't they?
And...
That's from my time.
That's what I was told by a person.
Oh, okay.
That Alliant Energy put these in. When they owned the building.
I have no idea. And we, again, we don't have good records that show exactly who put it in, when they put it in, why they put it in.
So Doris, you had emailed a little experiment that you had undergone to try to determine where the storm water was coming from. Can you just recap that for our benefit?
Um, yeah. When the water started coming in, before we called Mark, we wanted to make sure we understood that was still, it was storm water. So we got a couple gallons of bleach and poured it into the UW's broken box at that time. And then we waited like twenty minutes and tested the water in the basement to see if there any chlorine was coming in, and it tested positive. So, that's when we felt comfortable contacting Mark because it was definitely storm water. And it was going in the pipe, coming out my basement, and, and so that's why we don't really understand why or how it's happening because the pipe appears to be intact and, but it's, we're...
It is happening. I mean, that's the thing that's, I mean, I believe Jeff, that that pipe is probably solid. I mean, that's what they told us when they did that, you know, two thousand nine, that it was gonna be a forty-year pipe or something like that now, and there would never be... So the pipe's probably good, but there's all kinds of things connecting to it. There's Jeff drew a drawing of a French drain, how it probably is designed with gravel underneath that pipe and how the water probably is traveling down that, just as a, as a conceptual possibility. It wasn't that he said he was doing it or anything like that while he met with us, which made sense to us, that it might be water now traveling down that French drain. And even if it was the box and back, there still may be water traveling down that French drain from the, the lateral coming in from that sink, you know, where they're collecting water or someplace else. We don't know. That's the thing, is it's, it's, it's a broader issue, and we could go out there and we could dig it up right by our building, if the Thiel's would let us. We could put in, you know, a clay barrier like Jeff had talked about. We could move, put our sump line into the box out front, we could have it recompacted, it would go away in five years, we might be back here talking to you again. I mean, we need to look at this as a comprehensive, how do we deal with the water for this area in a, in a good way so that it's a long-term solution for us? I mean, for us as a village, not just for us, because we're getting the water out of our basement right now. We could solve it getting in there probably for a temporary period of time, but what do we do in the future?
Yeah, because we, we thought everybody could spend a lot of money trying to, you know, well, this is all I can do, so I'll put something there. But if we could just figure out what the problem is...
Yeah, if we can work together to figure out what the problem is, then we can figure out how we fix it and who's responsible for it. I mean, I'm not here to say who's responsible for anything. I, I have no idea yet, right? I mean, we just know we wanna participate in it because we're, we're, we're the symptom here. We're getting, we're the ones bleeding, and we're looking for somebody to help do more than just throw a Band-Aid on it. We wanna actually get to the root of the problem and fix it and, and be done with this, so you don't have to see us again. Except for good news.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so Jeff is right, we don't do work on private property. I mean, I've been asked personally sometimes about private property and what we do there, and some people have come, just like you have, and asked us to do things like that. So we don't do work on private property. As I understand it, what you're asking for is professionals to analyze and offer suggestions on what to...
Yes.
For this whole area?
Yeah. So is that the village's responsibility with the private property or...
I believe that we're talking about...
Owners, or is it a combination of the two?
I believe because there's so many property owners involved, that it becomes a civic natured thing and not an individual thing. And that's the purpose of our government, is to work, when we have more people involved, to actually help find common ground for those people and actually help instead of, you know, being a roadblock. And right now, we're kind of getting a roadblock, not from you guys yet, but I mean, just that's, it just, we think that we can all work together. We think that this can be something we can all work on as a team and don't have to, you know, be saying, well, that's not mine, I'm not gonna deal with that. We know it's an old downtown, it's an old, you know, village. There are things, just like we can't find records of these pipes, we don't know who's responsible. None of us are to blame for what happened forty years ago, right? I mean, we didn't make those decisions, we only have to deal with them today. We don't know if there is an easement or not, what it was intended for, it doesn't really matter at this point. What matters is that we try, somehow try and solve this problem, and it's broad. So, I believe it is.
It's an interesting dilemma, right? Because in a way, there's a private property owner that has a stake in this, but they're not being affected by it. And then there's a private property owner that has a stake in this that is being affected by it. And, and, and somehow, government works to help citizens who have conflicts of interest resolve those conflicts of interest, right? I mean, that goes back to Moses and split the baby, right? So, I feel, I feel as if we need to be part of the solution. I don't know that we need to be the solution, but that's not what I'm hearing you ask.
No, we're not asking the village to solve it.
And it sounds like UW Health should be part of the solution, and it sounds like Jerry and Bonnie should be part of the solution. And, and that I'd like to see us in some way participate in that process.
Do you have ideas on what that way would be? That's the dilemma.
You know, I, I think that a study needs to be done to figure out where the storm water's coming from, that I agree on. I can't think of too many other explanations, and it doesn't seem like it could be that hard to test. I mean, I don't know that, there's probably more sophisticated ways than bleach, but I think you wind up getting the same result. So if you can prove that water's coming from the storm sewer in the corner of UW Health's lot, and it's invading the basement of an adjoining neighbor, that's a start. And so maybe that's where we start. Is there a way that we can participate in testing that would help to isolate this problem?
Well, I wanna be, kind of, I kind of wanna be very clear on one thing and, and to anyone out there watching and everything is, we do not advocate or recommend or anything ever dumping chlorine, bleach down a storm drain. All of our storm drains lead to the Badfish Creek, and we, we just, I understand the idea behind the testing and everything like that, but I wanna be very clear that we don't, we don't encourage or permit or allow anyone to do that. The secondly is, the idea that I had was, we never view sump pumps as being a Band-Aid. I mean, there's a, there's, I, I don't know if we'd go through the village and count the number of sump pumps that are in a, you know, in people's crocks in their basement, you know, pumping occasionally. I, I know my neighbors, theirs run every time it rains as well, you know, and that's not a, that's just a, a nature of what we, you know, we live in. An area that has high groundwater, it has high, high event rainstorm events. We have foundations where soil pulls away from foundations when it gets really dry. And we have a rainstorm, goes right up against the foundation and into the sump. It's just a nature of, nature of where we live. But I think what they've done, they've had, they've had it professionally done. Badger Basement has done a nice job, I looked at it. It looks like it, it runs really well, that the problem right now is that it just discharges into the parking lot. And so they just need a, a year-round place to be able to put that. But, I mean, would this be any different if we had a resident over on Oak Street or Hillcrest or something like that coming to us and saying, I moved in three years ago and I'm getting water in my basement, and it's from the neighbor right next to me, you know, and I want you guys to, to take a look at it? I, I, I just don't see the difference. I understand we're in the downtown, there's a lot of entities involved, but I also wanna be very careful in what I recommend to the board as far as what we, what we do and what we don't get involved with.
Well, to the, to your point, because I think you make a really good point. So if we roll back the clock and, and we ask about the nature of the situation, at some point, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm drawing assumptions based on the conversation that we've been having, somebody at the village allowed UW Health to run a lateral into our stewardship. because I'm drawing assumptions based on the conversation that we've been having, somebody at the village allowed UW Health to run a lateral into our steward, into our storm sewer.
Um, yeah, well...
Because you can't just tie into a storm sewer.
Not UW Health, somebody allowed
Somebody.
The private landowner back there to connect to the public storm sewer system.
Right, and it would have been somebody, it would have been the village that would have had to make that, give that permission.
Yeah, we, and just as much as we've told, we've told the deetses that, you know, if they are able to pipe underground their discharge from their sump pump, we would allow them to tie into that box that's out in the street. Obviously, it takes a little bit removing some sidewalk and stuff to be able to do that and, and make that construction, but that would allow them to, to do that.
So, so I think there's been, there's been several situations that I'm personally aware of, of decisions that the village made in, in good faith. And we planned as well as could be planned. But then at implementation or execution, five years down the road, ten years down the road, there's an unintended consequence that, that nobody predicted through no fault of anybody. But, but it's there nonetheless. And lately, we've seen, we've seemed to have been kind of going through and repairing some of those decisions that were made. Jefferson Street's a great example. I'm sure that, I don't want to speak out of turn again, please correct me if I'm getting my facts wrong, but I'm sure that the, the county used its best judgment when it filled in that bed. And yet, many years down the road, we're finding out there's probably a better way to fill in a bed before you put a road over top. And so now we're going back through and we're fixing some of that. So what I'm, what I'm hearing the deetses say is, rather than engineer a solution to a problem that's been identified, they'd like to go back and fix the problem. But what I'm hearing you say is, going back and fixing the problem might not be the most efficient or cost beneficial way to address the issue, which is to create a, create an engineering solution to, to address the issue, which, which in your case, you were saying, allowing the deets to tie into the storm sewer with the runoff from the sump pump.
We, we don't, well, I don't, I think that's even too far down the road. I, we don't know, I mean, I don't think anyone in this room can conclusively say where the water's coming from and how it's getting into their system. Even back in two thousand, was it nine, when that was wrapped up? There was, there was a significant effort done to overexcavate the soils, I believe, around the foundation. Does that, does that ring a bell? I, I, hopefully I'm getting that right. And, and come back with compacted soil, a bentonite mix that should have sealed everything. And, you know, I've, I've worked seven, eight years in, in groundwater and water resource engineering where we dealt with problems like this. And they're, they're tricky to determine, they're tricky to, to ferret out. You can do testing, you know, whether it's with dye testing or whether you're doing kind of a tracer. You know, it's more safe for the environment. But they're tricky and you don't always get the answer you think you're going to get. And you can spend a lot of money doing that. And, you know, again, coming back to, you know, who's responsible for that? And in my opinion, it's been that's the, it's the landowner that's responsible for that.
I'd just like to speak to a couple of those things. I'm one person in the room who can, I swear it is storm water because when it rains, I get water. When it stops raining, the water stops. Now, that's slowly stopped over time. Now we're getting water more consistently dribbling, but when it rains, we get significant water. When it stops raining, we stop getting significant water. Home sump pumps are built completely different than what we're dealing with here. When you build a home, because I just finished building one on Prairie Parkway, very happy to be there, on, yeah, Prairie Grass, sorry. They actually put gravel in around the outside, they drain the wild, water into the drain tiles and run it to the sump pump with the intention that water that hits the side of the building goes down that, into that tile, into the sump pump and gets dumped away from the house. It's built intentionally to do that. This is different. There is compacted clay and sand all around our building. The water is coming in underneath the foundation, not through a drain tile, not through something that's gonna keep it from eroding out my foundation, which is old sandstone rock. And we've been getting sand, and we talked about this, Jeff, that we're getting sand. We had to have the sump pump actually cleaned out in the first week because there was so much sand in it. They had to come out and actually take everything out of it, get all the sand out and get it operating again. And it's a heavy-duty sump pump intended for this. They told us it wouldn't clog with sand, it'll pump sand out, it still did this. So it's, there's dirt coming out from underneath the foundation. This isn't like a normal household sump pump. It's not the same. It's also not the same as my neighbor having a little bit of water from their hose or from runoff coming off their property onto our property. This is a significant issue and it's an old building. I think it's important for us as a community to, to take care of our downtown and one of those buildings is ours and we're doing our best to take care of it. That's part of why we're here looking for help. We could just let this problem persist and dump the water out and not worry about it. And over time, we might have a foundation wall that starts to crack and a wall that comes down a little bit. And it ends up in disrepair at some point. That's not what we want, that's not who we are. We didn't buy that building because it was an investment, you know, to make money, clearly. We could have built something on the exterior of town that would have made much more sense financially. But we're committed to the downtown, we're looking for you to commit to it too. I know, Jeff, you're new to this job, but we need to work together, together. It can't all be about what's absolute black and white. Downtowns are gray. You can't have a black and white decision in an area like this. It just isn't the same as residential development. It's not. We've seen that over and over. When we redid the downtown, we saw this. It's not black and white. So I'm just, I'm a little frustrated that it's taking so much work to get us all to work together. I mean, we're not looking for the village to take on the responsibility to fix this problem, just be a partner in it.
You have to realize too, John, that, that, I mean, this is not, it's not that we're team players, it's not that we don't want to help in downtown. We've actually done a lot of help downtown.
Hmm.
But we have to do our due diligence because it's private property. And we've told a lot of people no. And there's lots of people that would ask if we started working on private property. So we have to look at this thoroughly, get a lot of information, ask Jeff as an engineer what his thoughts are and how it goes. So we're not, we're not sitting here trying to be difficult like you may think.
I, I don't think anybody on the board is trying to be difficult.
Okay.
I think what's different is we're talking about work, but when we're talking about engineering studies, we do this all the time in our communities and look at private lands. When you look at storm water flowage and evaluating that type of thing, you don't just look at the public sector of that when you're doing that. When, when we look to do a redevelopment of an area, we don't just look at what the village owns, that street down the middle. We look at the entire flood zone that it's in, how that storm water is going to drain off of it. The evaluation of that is evaluating private land and public land.
Yep, but we don't do work on the private land.
But I'm not asking for work, I'm asking for you to help us figure out what's wrong.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Let me see what Matt has to say.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure that I understand what the steps in the process would be and, and what the request is. So it sounds like the first step in the process that, that you've identified is to hire a qualified engineering consultant to do whatever work is necessary to determine or attempt to determine what the mechanism or mechanisms are that is resulting in water entering the basement. That's step one?
I think step one, if, if I were going to do this, I would, and I was gonna recommend, I would say Jeff should get the parties that are involved. So at least us and the feels and UW and the village staff that are relevant, involved in having a discussion about what's going on down here. Are we all willing to cooperate?
You mean, when you say cooperate, do you mean sharing the cost?
I mean cooperating and figuring out what's going on. Right now, there's no cooperation.
But it sounds like hiring an engineer is what this is leading to.
It's going to lead to something, somebody making that, Jeff's an engineer. I don't know if we have to hire an engineer if Jeff's qualified to do that work, I have no idea. See, this is why we're coming to the village, but it doesn't make sense for us to hire an engineer to do work on somebody else's property.
So your request today is that the village sit down with you, the feels and UW clinic and say, does everybody want to sit down together and talk about the waters?
I think that's step one and I think you're making this kind of a legal battle instead of a cooperative.
Trying to figure out what you're asking for.
We're asking for the village to cooperate.
Because, because we're gonna do anything, I think one thing the board has learned doing downtown, we're gonna have an agreement in place before we start.
Absolutely.
And so I guess what Matt's getting at, because we have to put this in writing so that the village board would know, if we do it, what, what the board will be getting involved in. We've gone down this road before, this time we're gonna have an agreement. That's what, so that's what Matt's trying to clarify.
And that's, I think what we're asking is for everybody to work together.
Right.
So if that means putting it in a writing, well, I just, that's, that's a good place to start.
That's what Matt's trying to get at.
I, I'm just looking at, let's try and work through this over the winter when the water problems aren't so bad so that by the time spring comes, we don't have a bigger issue.
Because I think what we would ultimately look at is saying, okay, there's this issue, got all these people involved. We believe that we put dye packets down, we, we, we come up with whatever it is that we, we come up with and just say, okay, Jeff recommends this and that and the other thing. And then we, I would imagine we would hash out then, okay, who does what? Because we've been able to ascertain through somebody that's not me with a bag of bleach, you know, that these were some issues. Because I know it's, nobody's gonna know what's going on underneath water, but we, because there's just so many players involved, we were hoping that Jeff would be able to provide some of this information.
Yeah, well, uh, well, again, it sounds like somehow step one is figuring out what are the facts? Or what, or what opinions do consultants have that they can come to about what's happening and why?
Yep.
So, but my sense from talking with Jeff today was that that would be something would probably be a third party, not that he would...
That's, that's exactly.
Yeah, so it's not that, something that Jeff can do in-house. I also learned from Jeff...
Would do in-house.
It's not something you would do in-house.
Correct.
I also learned from Jeff that it's a complicated, and I think he said this earlier. I mean, it's, we don't know whether the result of that will be definitive conclusions. It could be, you know, a range of ideas about what's causing it, but without a definite, yeah, if we do this, that's gonna solve it. So that, but, so I guess what I'm hearing is step one is, does the village want to in some way cooperate with the surrounding neighbors to identify and retain and presumably pay for a qualified third party to engage in that kind of an undertaking? I mean, I think that's what I'm hearing as a request. I just want to make sure we're all kind of talking about, ultimately, that's what we're probably talking about.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair.
Yeah, and paying for those services means we need to have an estimate as to cost. So again, it goes back like Matt said, we need to get some facts. It seems, I think you mentioned, John, that step one might be Jeff to get together UW, Bonnie and Jerry and you guys and talk about what are we willing to do together on this, which could include talking about paying an engineer. And then maybe, I think, I would think coming out of that, and it would probably be you guys, would be to see if we can get a storm water engineer out here to kind of give a proposal on what needs to be done and what to cost. Because I don't think the board can, will act unless we know what the cost, I mean, we're not gonna do an open ended, we'll pay whatever it comes out to be. It's, we don't do that, we can't.
So, so John, are you, are you asking for the village to participate in paying for this study or just to coordinate the meetings?
I guess we really hadn't thought that we'd be higher, have, having to hire an engineer because we thought maybe in the records there would already be some of this information and it would just be disseminated.
Yeah, well, Jeff will certainly help as he can, as he would in any situation that comes up.
I mean, it's kind of what Mark did, Mark, you know, got ahold of UW Clinic or Health and coordinated. So that's, that's one thing, I mean, but I think if you're asking for financial assistance and that's a whole, that's what...
Well, I think, yeah, I don't think we know yet, honestly. Because I see this as being a regional issue, that's still a water issue. I don't want us to fix one box and think we've solved the problem because if, if we're still getting too much water, I don't know what this water's... I'm, I'm asking, is there anything that says that they did an engineering report on the water and there's...
I mean, if we sit down and say, okay, let's just fill these with concrete and UW can put in their own sump pump system, is that really gonna...
Right.
Is, is that really the right thing to do? I mean, maybe it would help us, but...
Because we could ask the feels, would you mind if we fill the pipe with cement? Right? But it doesn't solve the problem.
Which pipe is that?
Maybe it does.
The pipe that's theirs, according to what Jeff is saying. That, all that stuff is all private, so if we ask those private property owners to fill them with cement, I mean, I'm not saying that we would do that, it's stupid, right? But, but it's the same kind of ideal, um, argument that village should keep their hands off. Well, if you're gonna keep your hands off, if we create a crag mire that causes a flooding down the back of the main street parking lots, it's too bad.
I think you get sued.
Well, exactly, and that's why we want cooperation.
You have responsibilities too that you have to follow, you can't just do what you want to and impact others, so...
That's, that's why.
That's what we're trying to say. Everybody has responsibilities, that's my point. So you're, you're hitting on it exactly. We would never do that because we have a responsibility, legal and moral. And we feel like the village has a responsibility, at least morally in this case. I don't know that it's legal. I don't think you have a legal obligation to do anything, honestly. I, I really don't. So it's whether you do what's right and actually participate in the community or don't. Most of the things you decide aren't based on legal decisions, they're based on what you think is good for the community. You make decisions every day on that, right? You can do this or not do this. It's not because you have to do it legally or you don't have to do it legally, it's because you want to do it because it's something that's good or right or just. I'm just asking you for to consider that, this situation.
And we will.
It should be noted on record that, I think in two thousand nine, the village invested, I think it was nine thousand dollars to have that line lined.
Yeah.
So...
And the soil compacted.
And the soil compacted, correct, I think that was an additional.
You make it sound like we haven't done our part.
That took care of the...
I want to address that, that I don't, I don't agree with that going forward.
I haven't, no, 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 I'm saying, I'm arguing that we should do something now. In that situation, you did, it solved the problem. We didn't have water after that.
Yeah.
You actu, you did come in, we did work together. I felt like that was a positive experience in two thousand nine.
I did too, yeah.
I, I don't want it to sound like it wasn't, this is not related to that. I'm looking at the overall thing and saying, well, gee, we had a problem then when the pipe cracked. And now we're having something else that's a problem, some other, so we fixed, we fixed one point in the pipe or one point in the system that was broken and now it's put pressure on another point in the system and now that's broken. That's why we think it needs a broader view. I'm not saying the village, you guys haven't done stuff, you worked with us, you did, we fixed that problem.
Yeah, when you say that there, we have a moral obligation, I mean, the implication is if we don't do anything, we have a matter of moral obligation. And just wanted you to know that I don't necessarily agree with that. We have to find, find out a lot of facts yet to determine what we're gonna do, so. Let's not jump too far down, disagree with allegations, please.
I don't feel like I'm trying to make allegations towards...
That was how it fell, that was how it fell.
Well, I didn't mean to insult you, Steve.
If you don't do this, we're not meeting our moral obligation.
No, I wasn't trying to threaten you at all.
No, I didn't feel a threat, I just felt like that's what you're saying and that what people could interpret that, well, the village didn't do it, so they didn't meet their moral obligation. That is your opinion. So let's kind of keep it more objective as we can going forward and...
And I will say, I will say though, that I heard that same, the same comment that was being made, actually, that was a very successful argument. If it had been done in court, I think Matt would have applauded you for that, that was a good move. Because the way you set it up, basically, the village only had one choice to make, but I don't think that's what you intended. What I heard you say, and I agree with you, is that we spend a lot of time working in the gray as, as a board because if it was black and white, you wouldn't need to be here.
Right.
And so, and so we are always trying to find the right thing to do that balances the interests of all the parties. And that, that's the art in what we do here every Monday. So I think you hit the nail on the head there. And then there's the, the legal component, which Matt's absolutely invaluable because there's points in time where, when we're trying to do the right thing, we could inadvertently put the residents of the village in jeopardy if we don't do, if we don't do the right thing legally. So, so there's a real strong partnership between both the spirit and the letter of the law. And, and striking the sweet spot, I think, is everybody's aim. And I am hearing you say that the village did a great job partnering the last time there was a problem and fixed the problem. And now it's, it's reared up again. And what you're asking for is the same consideration that you got the last time that this happened for the village to, for the, for the village board to act as stakeholders in this new issue.
And I think we're asking for less this time. We're asking for the village to help in figuring out what the problem is. Once we figure that out, we'll figure out who's responsible. Again, it is on private properties and things, so I don't see how it would be the village. And we know we're gonna take on some responsibility to try and keep the water out. So when something starts to happen out there, we know we want to put some money in, put some more skin in the game to make sure we don't have this problem continue. I mean, we know that. So I don't, I don't want it to sound like we're just asking you to do everything. I mean, you did more in two thousand nine than we're asking you to do now. We're trying to figure out what is this problem?
Yeah, and keep in mind, Jeff, with that other problem that was fixed, the way we worked, and we did work together well on that, that was on public property. That's, that's a difference here, that this is on private property. So I'm not saying we don't do anything, I'm just saying that there is a big difference there that needs to factor into how this goes. Eric's been waiting here.
I got, just a couple, real quick, Badger Basements, you said, came out, they did the sump work.
Yes.
Did they tell you how the water was getting in?
No.
You were there, no.
I would think they would be, I would think they would be one company that could look at this and say, well, you got a crack right here or you got something here.
It's coming under the wall, it's coming up from the ground.
The wall is also cinder block or dry stack...
The wall is also cinder block, or dry stacked stone, or something.
Right.
So, if we fix a problem here, water could still get in two feet down the road, so maybe the only solution is replace the whole foundation wall with a wall that's waterproof, because what's there now isn't.
It's, it's not the foundation wall, 'cause six feet down, it's dry, up in the back, where it's all dirt, it's all dry, it's in this one corner, right up in that front, it's, that, that is the place where the water comes in, it's nowhere else. That's where it came in, in the 2009 incident, it all poured in same way, came bubbling up out of the ground, right on the inside of the wall.
So, it's coming between the...
It's coming under the wall and up, it's not coming through the wall, it's not, it's not coming down the walls.
No, but it's between the floor and the wall, it's coming in there.
It, it was, there was a dry, a sand, a dry sand spot, they poured foundation and they left this much space, because the, the concrete will actually expand and contract and break the sandstone, so they left a, a barrier of sand around it.
Okay, so it's coming up through that sand then?
It was coming up through that. Badger Basement put a drain tile in that slot, a plastic drain tile, and then they put concrete over the, the top of it, so there's a little gap, air gap, and then a clean out. Happy to show anybody who wants to see, I'm more than happy. So, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just didn't understand what was down there.
But it's, it's coming under, I mean, it would be a tough without replacing the entire foundation wall to, to waterproof that, I think, 'cause it is a, it's a sandstone, stacked sandstone, with, you know, like sand mortar in it.
Right.
You know, old building.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm thinking, I know, I know, we'll ever solve the problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tell us all about the wall that is kind of in the way too, right?
Yeah, there's this, this spot in the building, there's also, yeah, the exterior wall is here, and about four or five feet in, there's another wall, and so it's coming under both of those.
So, there's a gap between the two walls?
Don't know what's between it, but there, I am assuming there's a gap with either air or rubble, or something in there, because I know it's, it's a foundation, like it's a supporting wall that goes about, it's about four feet in, five feet in, just a second one, and if you go back in the back part of the building, you can see it actually goes over, so, yeah. So, it's a...
My only thought is that in terms of taking specific concrete action tonight, again, I, I don't feel that there's a, a clear enough proposal to take action on, in terms of specifically what the village might be deciding to do or not do. And, so it would be, I think, helpful to have some clarity there. I mean, to say, will you be a good neighbor and cooperate with us and help us figure this out? What does that actually translate to in terms of specific actions that the village board would have to be, you know, considering? And so, maybe, I mean, if you want to, you could put together a, a real concrete kind of proposal, along with your neighbors, to bring back to the board as, as a suggestion.
But that's what we're looking for, is the village to take the lead role in figuring out what we do. So, you're asking us to go back and do the work instead, and that's what we're looking for, so if, so if I were to ask for this, I would ask for Jeff and maybe a board member or two, so that we have somebody joining us, and the property owners that are concerned, all get together to talk about what is it that we need to do? What is this proposal supposed to look like? What do we need to ask the board for?
Okay, so let me, let me work on that one.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, then the specific action, I guess, from the board? So, so, taking that approach, I guess, that what you're being asked to do is to direct your staff and maybe others to meet with whoever you identify, to develop a proposal or a plan for evaluating the problem, to bring back to the village board for consideration by the board. Is that what you're asking for?
Sounds like a, a way to start.
And I don't know exactly what that looks like, but you'd be directing staff and whoever else to just meet with people and try and figure out...
But why would, why would that come back to the board? If we're not gonna participate in the, in the analysis, why, why is the board even getting involved? I mean, so I was asking another question, if they're just asking us to coordinate a meeting or two...
We're asking this as a starting place, not as the final decision on what to do. I think we want you to participate in figuring out what's wrong, too. We need to start somewhere.
I hate to be a pain about it, but are you asking us to financially participate at some point?
We won't know until we meet and talk about it, that's what I'm saying.
So, the first step, back to Matt's point, is to just empower staff to meet and to be part of the conversation with, with whoever the stakeholders are, that are identified.
So, it sounds like it's John and Doris, and the Thiel's, and UW Health, and Jeff, and I would sit in there too, if you wanted to.
Yeah, and they're, and I have no trouble, I will work, I will work with everybody, but, you know, they, they're very clear that they want the village to take the lead in finding the problem, which is, is what the bot, kind of the summary of their memo, and, and I'm just wondering what shaky ground we're on, if we're asking the village to take the lead in solving it. And, and we call, call it a regional problem, but a regional problem is usually something that is adversely affecting a large region and numbers of people. And I think the people involved here, UW's not coming before us saying we're being damaged here. The Thiel's have brought some concern with the discharge of the sump pump and everything like that, but has it resulted in, or accumulated in a problem with the pipe? And so, I just, I just kinda wonder what, you know what I'm seeing, I, I will, I will obviously follow the, the board's direction in whatever way you would ask, you know, for me to do, but...
And, and if the board's direction is to meet with the affected parties to discuss the situation and talk about what kind of proposal might be brought back to the board, I wanna make it clear that I don't see in that any authorization to staff to agree to anything, or even propose anything.
Oh, no.
This, again, would be more of a meeting facilitation.
Yeah.
Listening, taking notes to bring back, unless, unless instead what you want is, what Jeff said, if what you're saying is, no, we want the board to direct staff to take the lead in determining what the problem is and figure it out, that's a very different proposition.
And the challenge there is, it's, from my perspective, is it's, it's a blank check. If we, if we make that decision, and to Steve's point, I couldn't in good faith just give you a blank check from the citizens of Oregon that you could fill in at a later date, I just couldn't do that. But I could certainly agree to be part of the solution. And the other thing is, I don't necessarily think that having the village present brings any added weight to the discussion. I think it's a valid discussion all by itself, and my hope would be that your first conversation with UW Health would just reaffirm for you that they consider themselves good partners and good neighbors, and they're as concerned as you are. If you had that first meeting and found that wasn't the case, then I think I would need to factor that into my, my thought process, but until you have that first meeting, I can't say that they wouldn't.
Because we were hoping that with having Jeff there, would just be giving his opinions and what he, he sees and what he's able to evaluate, and I'm not trying to say he, everything hangs on him, and he said this, and so that has to be the truth, or that he's financially responsible for anything. It's, we, we don't even have a starting place, other than everyone's saying, not happening to me, so, you know, if Jeff can give a professional opinion of what he believes could be problems, and, and it is really, at this point, not knowing anything, it is just talking and saying, what are the possibilities, and then we can all decide, okay, who can do this, who can do that? I mean, Jeff, he is going to take a look at the front box, I mean, there could be issues there, there could be issues in many places, so we're just wanting a, a type of a professional opinion with people, laypeople who don't get it, before, you know, hiring or outside agencies or engineers to look at, you know, this section of the village and make, you know, their analysis, which we think is beyond our, our scope of what, you know, is our part of it. So, we just wanted Jeff to be there to just help us understand what could be happening, the potentials, what his opinion is, and then we would have a place to move forward from.
So, Jeff would be, would be there more from his, from the standpoint of his expertise as a participant?
That's, yeah.
Right. I mean, the information Jeff gave us when he met with us was very useful, I mean...
You've already isolated a few things that it's not, because of the work that Jeff did, and that's gotta be helpful.
Right, we know it's not the pipe itself, it's in good shape, I mean, we know, look at this box, we know the one box was replaced, it's probably not it, although somebody should probably look at it to be sure, it's a very shallow box, so, I mean, but that kind of thing, at least, it also gives the weight of cooperation to all the parties, just because the village is sitting there, they don't have to be responsible for it, you know, I mean, there's just a weight, it's just like coming here, there's a weight of, I don't know what to call it, trying to blank, I usually don't do that.
Well, it's no longer, it's them, it's, it's a communal effort, it's a communal issue, and it, and it doesn't put you on opposite sides of the desk.
Right.
Which I could see, I had something very similar happen not that long ago to me, and it's intimidating when you don't know somebody to meet with them cold and explain that you have a problem that you think they might be responsible for.
Right.
And if that's the only way you know how to start the conversation, that's a tough conversation to have. And I can see where it would be helpful to have at least a third party there, if not just because the number's three would keep you from being on opposite sides of the desk, and now you're around a table, but beside that, there's a, there's a history here that you don't necessarily have all of, and an expertise that you don't have any of, and conceivably, the person who would represent UW Health would be in a similar disadvantage, not necessarily knowing the history and not necessarily having the, the technical knowledge, so there's a, there's another side benefit to that individual being Jeff, or, or somebody from the village board.
Well, I think it builds that cooperation too, because as we move forward with a solution, even if it's UW, us, and the Thiel's that are, are implementing whatever solution it is, the village is gonna have to be involved in that solution, at least in approving it, right?
No, village would not have, that's, depends on what you're gonna do. I mean, it depends on what the, we don't know what the problem is, we don't know what the solutions are, so...
Yeah, and at this point, you're kind of, you're, you're putting the cart before the horse, and you're, you're thinking what this could be, and, and what this could affect, and what you might need, but you don't know until you have that first meeting, so could we just agree that, that that first meeting is a great place to start? And, and if I made a recommendation that, that would allow Jeff to participate in that meeting, would, would that at least give us a starting point?
Yes.
I think so, that would be great.
Yeah, I think we have three options, that meeting is the first option, I think that's the best one, the other one is to direct staff to take the lead, and that's not gonna happen, we need a lot more information before we do that, and it probably won't happen none. And the other is to just tell you guys, go away, it's your problem, I don't want us to do that either, so, that brings us back to that first one, have that meeting with the invested property owners, Jeff, and I'll sit in if you think that's important. So, does that sound okay? Jeff?
Yeah.
I'd be fine with that.
Doug?
Just to ask, Matt, Jeff's participation, or his opinion, his professional opinion would not be binding, though.
No, they wouldn't be binding on, on anyone, I mean, if he's just providing his own kind of thoughts.
Yeah, I meant to say, there's no obligation or commitment on the part of village people, myself, or Jeff that are there, it's to be part of that discussion, that's it.
This is a discussion, it's not a commitment.
So, there's no, you come out there and say, well, you said you would, because that's not gonna happen.
I, I think the, the role that Jeff might most usefully play would be, given his experience, to help the group understand what it might take to do an analysis that would lead to, you know, some reasonable basis to understand why the water's entering the basement, and to think, you know, so he might be able to help the group understand, this is probably the kind of process that would be necessary to figure this out, here's maybe the likelihood that we'll figure it out.
Right.
Here are the kind of qualifications that you'd be looking for.
I mean, you know, given, given the work that they've done already, and, and the work that has been done out there already, some of the low hanging fruit has kind of been already picked. You know, my, my discussion with them at the time was, is, you know, you, you guys need to hire an engineer to, to come out and look at this and be able to be giving you an answer. If, if you're, if you hire an engineer and the engineer says the problem is your neighbor, well, then you know to go to your neighbor and, and talk to them about that problem. Right now, none of us here can say, you know, this is the exact problem, but, you know, somewhere along the line, someone has to take that first step, do the evaluation, get a report, and then determine if, you know, what the next steps are.
Well, what would be interesting would be if, if at a table where the stakeholders were present, everybody came to that same conclusion and could move forward together. I don't know if that's possible, but conceivably...
Okay, some kind of back to, are we okay, is that, are we all okay with going ahead of that meeting?
I'd like to make the motion to, to direct Jeff, is that the right word? Because I'm not asking, I'm not telling you to do anything you don't wanna do, but to allow you to participate in the meeting.
We can just agree to do that, we don't need a motion to do it. I mean, staff works at meetings all the time, so...
We'll facilitate a meeting with the, the Thiel's, the Dietzes, and UW Health, I believe, is really, really where the party is, where the, where...
I think those are, three of those are that.
I think they're, beyond that, getting private residents' participation up along South Main might be a pretty tricky adventure.
Yeah, I think those are three to deal with.
But I think, you know, I'll, I will try to organize a meeting with all those parties, and we can have it here at the village hall, and kinda discuss the next steps.
Anybody who's not okay with that? Looks like we'll plan with that, and that sounds like that's works pretty good, so...
Thank you. Appreciate it. We appreciate all the time you've given us, it's much more than we had needed.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item C, discussion of possible action with Jefferson Street parking lot issues. Item one, approval of ordinance number fifteen dash zero five, and ordinance to amend section seven point oh two five B relating to parking restrictions. We would waive the first and second readings and move for adoption. This requires a two-thirds vote of the board.
That's one we're gonna hold till next meeting.
Okay, did you tell me that?
I did.
I don't think so.
Doesn't make you read the whole thing, I thought, ah, I'm not gonna...
That didn't take long. Okay, item two, approval of eliminating parking stall on the west side of the lot, and we have the diagram in our packet with regard to that.
And so, the board at the last meeting said it was contingent, that we would eliminate our parking space if, if RX eliminated a parking space on his property, which is actually Paul Lynch's, so I emailed, well, actually, the chief and Jeff talked to Roger from RX, he's fine with it. I emailed Paul Lynch last week, and Paul said he's fine with it, too. He's actually said thank you, that was a good idea.
Yeah, so you, that was your request, too.
Good job, Eric.
So, do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that. Second?
Thank you, the motion's second, discussion, anybody in the audience wish, wish to speak to it? No, okay, so, discussion?
You know, my only concern still remains that if you try to, if you try to come up a two parking stall space and make a turn with a tow truck, someone's gonna get clipped, and they're gonna be on a public parking lot when it happens, so, I'm not, I'm going to vote in favor of it, because I don't feel strongly enough that I need to object, but I wanna make that comment that I'm still concerned about that.
Yeah, we'll see how that works, hope it works out. Any other comments? So, we have motion second to eliminate one parking stall, on our favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Of course, motion curious, thank you. We'll go to item D, from November twenty-third committee meeting, Town and Country Engineering is here at the meeting to talk about the agreement, discussion of possible action regarding approving Madison Metropolitan Sewers District Adaptive Management Intergovernmental Agreement, and the recommended motion is to approve that agreement, so, thank you for waiting patiently, I hope you enjoyed that discussion.
I'll just give a quick intro to Ben, Ben, here she is. I'm gonna give you a quick intro, then the floor is all yours, I've talked enough tonight. But Ben's gonna talk to us a little bit about this adaptive management, what it means to our, our system moving forward, our wastewater treatment plant moving forward, and we also, out of the committee, we had asked them to take a look at kind of the present worth[1699.72] present worth analysis of whether it makes sense to enter into a long-term agreement that's upwards of about ninety to a hundred thousand dollars per year commitment versus a major upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant. So, you're on.
There we go. Um, so, I'm not quite sure how much you guys have discussed of this yet and, uh, where you're at with it. So just to give you a little background, um, you guys got a new permit, uh, about a year and a half ago, and that included some new phosphorus limits, uh, for the treatment plant. Those phosphorus limits were very, very stringent, um, to the tune of point zero seven five parts per million. That's a very low number. Right now, your limit is one point two parts per million. Something like that, if you were just to treat for it, um, would cost millions of dollars. And we did an estimate, um, for one alternative for, for treating down to that level, and that came back as about four point nine million dollars to treat down to that point zero seven five. All in additional processes that would be added at your treatment plant. With that new permit that you got about a year and a half ago, um, there was a compliance schedule associated with it, giving you, uh, somewhere in the seven to nine-year range to figure out what you're gonna do. And the DNR gave you quite a few options, uh, in, uh, what compliance you can do. Uh, one of them being treatment. Um, there's also other programs out there, um, and one of them that you guys are considering very heavily is adaptive management. And the reason you're considering that is Madison Metro is, um, or Madison Metropolitan Sewers District is proceeding with a full-scale adaptive management plan in the entire Yuhara watershed. Adaptive management is a program working throughout the watershed. It's really a whole watershed plan, or a whole watershed approach, uh, to reducing phosphorus loadings to the, to all of the streams, rivers, and everything within the watershed. Up to this point, you've been participating in a pilot project. Um, that pilot project was something that Madison was doing to figure out what the feasibility of doing adaptive management is on a large scale. What is the actual cost gonna be to do adaptive management on a large scale? And can they get the participants? 'Cause you can imagine, if you're working within a very, very large watershed, like the Yuhara watershed is, uh, there's a lot of parties involved, and there's a lot of stuff that you have to do. So, what they've gotten to at this point is they've done three years' worth of pilot testing on Six Mile Creek, uh, north of Madison, north of Lake Mendota. Uh, they've done a series of monitoring, uh, projects, they've done quite a bit of, uh, agricultural improvements, um, and have decided, uh, based upon that pilot project to move forward full-scale. And are inviting anybody that was participating in the pilot and anybody that was, uh, involved or is in the watershed to, uh, join into the, uh, full-scale pilot project, which will involve the entire Yuhara watershed all the way down to Fulton. So what we put together and what's in your packets is a comparison, uh, on a present worth basis of that adaptive management plan and what Madison is proposing to if you were to do treatment. So treatment, like I said, is about four point nine million dollars. There'd also be a significant increase in operating and maintenance costs associated with chemical addition and additional sludge that is generated from treating for phosphorus. So, on that sheet, you can see, um, quite a few columns under, under disk filters. That's the treatment alternative, adding a filter at the end of your treatment plant. There's a column that shows capital cost, O and M and replacement cost. Those would be additional, uh, expenses that you would have down at the treatment plant to give you, uh, what an annual total would be for a year. And then we all, we bring it back to a present value over that period, um, to give you a, a way to compare those annual and, uh, present or, and capital costs. It's shown, uh, quite a few years down the list, because that's really where your construction would occur, um, based on your permit compliance schedule. The present worth cost over the life of, of that equipment, uh, which is, you know, a twenty-year life expectancy, is five point eight million dollars. So that's just, it's not really a real number. You would be better off summing up all of the values to, to give you a real number of what expenses would be, but present worth gives you a way to compare all of those. Um, and we're using a rate of return that the DNR, um, requires for evaluations of four point six two five percent. Comparatively, adaptive management doesn't have any capital expenses for your treatment plant, doesn't have any capital expenses for the village. What it does have is you're gonna be paying Madison Met, and really, they're forming another entity called Yuhara Winds, uh, to do and implement that adaptive management plan. And your participation in that, um, would give you compliance, uh, over the lifetime that you're participating, um, related to phosphorus. Right now, the anticipated cost is roughly eighty thousand dollars a year to participate. What we did for this is we assumed that each permit term, uh, that number would go up by twenty percent. Gives you a really, really conservative, uh, comparison of what's going on. The reason the number might go up is, one, Madison might have underestimated what the cost of adaptive management would be. They're going to be relooking at that every five years. The more likely reason that, uh, cost would increase is because the village is going to grow. Realistically, you're not gonna grow to the tune of twenty percent, uh, and especially not in comparison to everybody else. So, the way Madison figures out what the costs are for each community and each entity that's involved is, they have a big pot of money that they need to divvy up, and they just break it up by percent. So you guys are getting a specific slice of the pie. So if you guys grow and nobody else grows, your slice of the pie becomes quite, quite a bit larger, your cost would increase like that. But if everybody grows at the same rate, your slice of the pie doesn't really change. If cost doesn't change, your annual payment wouldn't change. So, uh, right now, we just, for conservative sake, give you guys something to compare, assume twenty percent increase, because we felt that that was a very conservative, uh, estimate. The other thing that, uh, is a part of adaptive management is you do have a slight reduction in what your effluent limits would be. And that reduces over the lifetime of a, an adaptive management program. So you would have to treat down to point six eventually, and then eventually to point five. So that's in that O and M and replacement other, under the WAM, uh, area, that, that's the cost associated with adding extra chemicals to get down to the point six and the point five. Still not anywhere near, uh, getting down to point zero seven five, and, um, you know, wouldn't require, or shouldn't require, uh, adding any sort of treatment on, on the end of your treatment plant. None of this, I, I'll just qualify, none of this is really addressing anything, you know, you get, associated with the treatment plant. There may be things in the future that you guys are needing to address. This is really just looking at this tur, or this advanced phosphorus treatment and, and compliance, um, you know, so, just throwing that out there. Um, so, from a, from that standpoint, adaptive management comes to a total of one point six million dollars on a present worth basis. So, quite a bit significantly less than, uh, what a capital expense would be. So that you're aware of all options that are out there. There's also a, a compliance option called water quality trading. It's very similar to adaptive management in that you're working within your watershed. If Oregon were to undertake that, you would be undertaking it by yourself, and you'd be working within the watershed upstream of your treatment plant. So, it's a quite a bit smaller area, and instead of trying to, uh, bring water quality to the water quality criteria, you're really trading pound for pound for what you discharge at the treatment plant. So if you're discharging a hundred pounds at the treatment plant, uh, you might be looking for two to three hundred pounds at, in the watershed. In actuality, you're discharging somewhere more around the five hundred pound mark. So, just to give you kinda scale of that. That's another compliance option. Based on evaluations we've done for other communities, that's generally more expensive than adaptive management, especially adaptive management on the participation scale that you're looking at here. There are variances out there, um, none of which, uh, the village will qualify for, uh, partially because you're within Dane County, partially because you have a high median household income, and then, uh, because you have a compliance option of this adaptive management, it, it really doesn't have a huge, a, a large enough rate impact to warrant a variance. So, those are the big four categories that are out there, and two of which are, you guys are seeing here.
Thanks, you did a good job of explaining that.
What, just to clarify, what, what you're looking at tonight is, uh, the village has been a participating member of Yuhara Winds for the last five years, and it's actually been extended to a sixth year. And, and now that that's going from the pilot study to the full-scale study, that's why we're jumping up from nineteen thousand and change up to seventy-nine thousand, six hundred for the next year. It's in our budget to do that. We've actually, we have agreed to be part of this on an ongoing basis. I think the off-ramp is every five years.
Yeah, so, so the way Madison's setting everything up is there'll be a fi, every permit term, you'll have an off-ramp, uh, if you decide to go with another compliance option. Uh, that way, if you guys evaluate something down the road and, or, you know, treatment costs change, you have the ability to get out. There's also gonna be the opportunity for you guys to participate in decision-making associated with it. They're really gonna be forming a, a new type of a commission, uh, to, to implement adaptive management. So there will be a governing body made up of members of the participating entities, so...
And it's our recommendation, just that you would consider, I mean, and Matt's reviewed this, I know you, what?
I haven't yet, I've been asked to look at it, but...
Okay, but it's, it's been drafted by the guy you share a cube with, right?
It was drafted by one of my partners who represents MMSD. Yeah. Yeah, so Paul Kent at my office actually apparently drafted the agreement. I asked him if he thought it made sense for me to review it, and he said he thought it did, because he would appreciate kind of the perspective of a municipal lawyer, looking at it, see if I would identify any issues, tech, technical kinds of issues or things of that nature. I don't expect to second-guess him on the water, on the phosphorus stuff in particular, so... So I think Mike's suggestion was that the board would review it, subject to any technical adjustments that I might recommend.
And we brought the present worth analysis before you and asked, asked Town and Country to prepare that, just because we think that gives you, that should give you a reassuring feeling that this investment in approximately eighty to a hundred thousand dollars over the next five years, every year, is a good financial choice over, uh, a complete upgrade to the plant.
One question I've got, and I don't know if you can answer it, or Jeff can answer it, or if it should be answered in three years. But do we have any upgrades that we're planning on doing to the plant, five years down the road, or that we're gonna be required to do because equipment's running, getting old and it's gonna have to be replaced, that maybe at that point?
Nothing of this significance, nothing that would, this is a specific treatment train that we would, that, that really is not complementary to other, to other things at this point, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, just, just adding on to that, you know, Jeff and I have talked about it a little bit, you guys have made some, some equipment replacements, we've done some equipment replacement with you over the last couple of years. Your treatment plant is getting to the point that it's, I believe, about twenty years old since you did the last really major upgrade. So, in the next five to ten years, there could be things that are coming up, um, and, and you may wanna consider some planning prior to that point. But there's nothing imminent on the horizon that, that would really cause you to, to have to undertake a major upgrade.
Okay, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agreement?
I have a quick question.
Uh, let's get a motion on the floor here. I didn't do that.
I'll make the motion.
Contingent, okay. Upon village attorney's review. Okay, so we gotta have that, with the review and approval, attorney. Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, is there a cap on what, on what the cost could be to the village year over year? And are all of the participants locked in from the same start point to the same endpoint? Or can participants attrit over the course of five years slowly, and then that would in fact raise the participation rates of all of the remaining participants?
So, they're doing this on a five-year increment, so your costs are locked in for five years, and then they're gonna true up every five years. So they're not, and they're not gonna true up retroactively, they're gonna true up, so if, you know, you're paying eighty thousand or seventy-nine and change right now, um, if you choose to participate, five years from now is when they'll true up again.
Okay.
As far as how people line up getting into it, um, everybody's gonna be required to, to sign up right now. They will, as I understand, allow people to enter retroactively, but they're not, you, you can't just skip it and jump in and, and save a bunch of costs, because you skipped it for three years. So, something like that, they would backcharge most likely. Um, they've, they've had some communication associated with that. The thing that I'm not quite sure about related to that is how it's gonna affect everybody's permit schedule. 'Cause if you can imagine, you guys got your permit a year and a half ago, um, whereas Madison Met hasn't got their permit, uh, even yet, a revised permit that includes phosphorus. So some of that's gonna have to get trued up as we move along here. Um, and I, I'd have to talk to Madison Met as far as exactly how that's gonna get trued up.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to approve the agreement, contingent upon the village attorney's review and approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Good thanks for your patience.
Ben, sorry to make you wait so long.
So item E is to hold a public hearing for class A liquor license, cider only for Quick Trip, eight fifty-six North Main Street, Quick Trip, nine sixteen Janesville, Quick Trip, one thirty-five North Main Street, and Stop and Go, eight fifty-six Janesville Street, and possible action on the licenses. So, are you here for that? Okay. I'm gonna come on up to the microphone, 'cause, and I will open the public hearing. Welcome?
Hello.
So if you wanna give us, uh, maybe that self-explanatory, just what, what you're planning and why you're doing it?
Um, I was asked to come as, uh, support for Quick Trip in regards to the renewal of the licensing, but wasn't given any specific, um, anything to discuss, I guess.
So you're a Quick Trip manager?
I am, on Janesville Street.
Okay.
Correct.
So first thing that comes, yeah, man?
I, this is the, the most irritating type of license and issue that I've seen yet. Here's this, here's the legal situation. This is a, the cider only, right?
Yes.
So, so as I understand it in Wisconsin law, if they already have the class B, or whatever, the class A?
Class A.
If they already have the class A license, um, they need to apply for and obtain the cider license, and there needs to be a public hearing on it, but the village is required by law to grant it. So you don't have any discretion. So why they make us go through this is beyond me.
It's a lot of work.
But, thank you, state legislature.
One of their many rotten decisions they've been making, well, the last five years.
We, we have to have a public hearing, and we have to vote to approve it, but if you deny it, it will be an unlawful denial.
You know what's even more irritating? Is two or three Quick Trips just failed compliance checks.
Yes.
And you have a record of doing that. And I have no desire to, to increase your license. And I'd like to go back to the headquarters and say, you know, they really don't wanna do it, 'cause we don't pass compliance checks. When we get to where we're all com, compliance checks, then we should go back and talk to them. Otherwise, I'd say, Quick Trip can take a hike on this license.
We are, uh, I've actually been in touch with my district leader, along with the corporate office, and all three of our stores are going under, um, mandatory retraining for alcohol, tobacco checking through our corporate office.
I would hope so.
Yes. So, that is being addressed, um, and taken very seriously.
So what's the legal consequence if we vote against it? Vote it down? So I'm voting against it.
Let's see what happens.
That's what I'm doing. That doesn't mean you guys have to, but...
If it, if it's not...
No way, when they fail compliance checks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to increase their license.
If it's not approved, then Quick Trip will have to decide whether to challenge that.
Yeah. Which I, I, that's my recommended course of action, but I'm only one person, so...
The, the board should know that, uh, we did compliance checks and nine businesses have failed, and that's, that's coming to the board the next board meeting.
Yeah. Two out of three Quick Trips failed and the Stop and Go passed. One Quick Trip.
Yep.
The Quick Trip is kinda one management entity, as far as I'm concerned, so...
So are we gonna then split this motion and vote on Quick Trips and vote on Stop and Go individually?
I'm fine with that.
Well, so I'm wondering if we're, if, is it possible to hold, to hold this decision? I feel like there's a whole meeting I haven't been a part of. Like, this is the first I'm hearing that they failed compliance checks.
Well, we just, we just did them.
Yeah, we just got them done. I just got the email.
Yeah.
So it wasn't timely done to get that to the board tonight, so that'll be on the next meeting. If it had been done a week and a half ago, it'd be on tonight's agenda, but...
Correct.
They just got them done.
It was Saturday.
I mean, they've been efficient getting them done, it just was a timing thing.
Yeah.
And we're trying to, we're trying to get some history too, Jeff, about, you know, like, for example, I think the Quick Trip Central has failed three times, Steve wants that history before it comes to the board, so we're working on that.
Can we table this then, till next week, when we have that report, or, or is that not allowed?
Uh, I don't see a reason why you couldn't. The other thing I'll mention to the board is that the fact that you are in this awkward position on this cider license doesn't mean that when the licenses are up for renewal, you wouldn't have the authority to choose to, um, institute, or even now, you don't have to wait. to institute, or even now, you don't have to wait. If you decide on the basis of their performance that non-renewal is something that should be pursued, you have that ability to pursue that. The crazy thing about the way the statute is written is that if they have a Class A, then they're in, then we have no choice but to approve the cider license, which is an additional component to that, I guess. So, yes, I think you can table. Approving the cider license does not mean that they're not subject to non-renewal, if you decide that's appropriate, or suspension. And Peggy, are you tracking with me on the cider license? Have you looked into that? What I'm saying, do you agree with that? I'm correct about the cider license? Or have you not looked into that?
I know that we have to go through this process. We can't charge for it.
Yep. But you're not so sure about, do they have to grant it?
Yeah, that part I'm not sure about.
I'm pretty sure, yeah. So you can table it. You can deny it, subject to their right to challenge that denial. And once you've evaluated the compliance issue, if you decide some further action is necessary, you could certainly pursue that.
Or we could just have a hearing and suspend their license.
Well, it's a little bit more of a process than just a hearing to suspend. Yes, we'd have to schedule a, we'd have to schedule a proceeding, a due process proceeding, to consider suspension or revocation. That's a little bit bigger deal than...
Yeah, I know. It's a big deal, yeah.
But I think, given what Steve's saying, without looking at the facts, I'd be more in favor of coming at it from that perspective, gathering all the facts and deciding whether we have enough in front of us to proceed with suspension of the license as a whole, than denying this particular aspect of a Class A license, which doesn't prevent them from serving liquor. It just prevents them from serving whatever the definition of cider is, and potentially puts us in court, which, you know, could run up a number just to state our case in court. We could run up a pre-sized legal bill and in the end lose.
So I guess one idea was to table this till next time?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it, given what Matt said about the law regards to this public hearing and this request. And then I'd also like to ask Matt separately to gather the facts and to present to the board whether or not you feel it would make sense for us to proceed with revoking their liquor license altogether.
So Jeff made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Did we already make a motion?
I don't have, no.
No.
That's first one. I know you used to do that at least once a meeting, but.
So I'll second that for discussion. So Matt, is this, do you, is this your legal opinion, or is this like black and white? Or is it a gray matter? And this is your interpretation of the law?
You know, it's been a few months since I looked at it, but I actually, I looked at it. I talked to Claire Silverman at the league, and I was shocked that, as I understand it, it's not really a fuzzy issue in terms of the cider license. It's pretty black and white.
See, my thought is we vote it down. And tell regional, you know, be a good business citizen. Come back when you're doing okay on compliance checks. Otherwise, we're sending a message, you know, you do it right, or it's going to be a problem. And there are other problems that can come from failing compliance checks, too. They're a lot bigger than this that we have to do. That's my thought. Just send a strong message to them. They need to get their act together, because they haven't, obviously.
But now Stop and Go shouldn't be included in this.
We could have a motion after this to approve Stop and Go, right, which I'm fine with.
But I agree with you for what it's worth. I agree with you. We need to send a strong message. I just think the message needs to be a lot stronger than just not being able to sell cider, even if we can get that through the court system.
Yeah. Well, and let me say that compliance checks are proven. They have a significant impact on underage drinking. That's why we do them. Quick Trip needs to get that message, that we're trying to cut that down. And you're not cooperating very well, not you specifically, but, and I'd be happy to have somebody from your headquarters call me.
Okay. I can arrange for that.
Okay. And my number's on the village website.
And then a motion to table just kicks the can down the road then? What do you say?
Till your next meeting. I think it was to table until you could review the compliance check information.
And we know two of the four didn't make, yeah, two of the three didn't make it. So I'm fine with what we know about compliance checks tonight. You folks haven't seen that, so if you're not, that's different. But I'm fine to vote on this tonight. Vote it down. Tell them, start doing okay on compliance checks and come back to us.
But then still have Matt research the other issue and bring back when we do get the compliance checklist.
Yeah, he'll talk to Claire Silverman. That won't take very long. Right, ma'am?
Well, I could speak to it at your next meeting if you want.
Yeah.
The 21st?
Yep. Further discussion? So we have a motion and second to, did I close the public hearing? I didn't.
You didn't.
We need to before we vote, right?
Please.
Okay. So I'm going to close. Anybody want to speak to this? Anybody else? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing with a motion second to approve this. And...
This is just Stop and Go only?
No, this, well, this is the whole thing. We'll bring Stop and Go back separate, right? Or should the motion just be the Quick Trips?
I thought you were separating them out, that this was Quick Trip only.
Is that okay with the motion and second?
I'm all right amending the motion to approve for the Quick Trips only.
Yeah, okay.
If you're okay seconding that motion.
Sure, but I think I'm going to vote no against it. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's weird, but yeah.
I'm voting no against it.
Your second's for discussion.
I want to deny it.
I will also approve that, for the sake of moving forward in the process.
Okay.
For calling the vote.
Yeah.
So if you want to send that message to Quick Trip, you would vote no on this. So we have that motion for the Class A liquor cider only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Okay, so it's five to one. So I'll hope for a call from your regional manager, whomever is appropriate.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not blaming you for this.
One to five.
Do we still need to discuss the Stop and Go tonight?
Yes.
So I'd make a motion to approve the Stop and Go quest for the cider license?
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. So item seven is approval of minutes. There are none. Item eight is approval of vouchers. And we have vouchers tonight in the General Operating Fund, the amount of $650,616.16.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any questions? Since we miss a jury.
I know.
Okay. Now, we have motion and second to approve vouchers in the amount of $650,616.16. Roll call, please.
Grenier?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Udrow?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. Item nine is community input. Is there one here would like to address the board tonight? Okay. So which one is that?
Eleven B.
Okay, so we're almost there.
Yeah.
Okay. So item A, under communication, whoops, I'm sorry. Item 10, proclamation announcements, board comments. Anyone?
Yeah, I want to thank Oregon Floral. They, once again, this year went into the fire department and put up a tree and decorated the fire department's community room, and it just looks amazing. So, and they did that without prompting. They just showed up one day and started decorating.
I didn't know they did.
Yeah. It's the second year in a row.
They do excellent job.
And I'd like to, again, thank Darlene for her leadership on the likes. We can't say that too much. She's done it for a long time, and it takes great interest. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other board comments? Item B, staff comments?
Meeting next week, Monday night, joint meeting with the Plan Commission about the sign-ordens.
Late meal at five.
At five, yes.
Yeah. Y'all get that? We have some sandwiches and stuff at five o'clock. And item two, leaf collection, ongoing comments, Jeff?
We should be almost totally wrapped up. They've been able to go through the village entirely in one day now. So we are, we're at the very, very tail end. Weather's been favorable. The guys have smiles back on their face. End of site, so it's looking good.
And I saw them out today grinding brush, which ended in October, so good for them. I mean, they're really, really picking up. And I think I left a message that...
Not to set policy.
Yeah, great. No, we've done that before when it's needed.
Yes, exactly. They do that and, yeah.
I mean, what we send out clearly says it ends in October, but people don't stay aware of that. So they just keep putting brush out.
It helps clean up the village, and it's very much appreciated, I know, by a lot of people.
We had time, went around and did it, and I left a message, I think, about over on my side of town where they went through in the rotation and picked up leaves and ran the sweeper, and it really looked great, so.
Yep, they're doing a nice job.
Yeah, good for them.
I'll let them know that, too.
Okay. Item 11, communication, miscellaneous business, FYI, 2015 estimated tax bill. Comments here from staff?
Just, listen to me. Okay. And tax bills should be, what are we saying?
We submitted the mill rate worksheet today. They say there's about a four-day turnaround. Then we have to get them printed, sorted, and mailed. I'm hoping by beginning of next week, they should be in the mail.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we've got, item B, discussion, possible action regarding amending the downtown dumpster agreement. We're adding an additional user going from four to five, right?
That's correct.
And do we want to increase the total license fee of $520 is a question that we need to think as we approve this. My thought is we leave it at that, divided by five instead of four.
And if I'm remembering right, the purpose of the licensing fee was to repay the village for the investment of the construction of the dumpster corral in the first place. Is that right?
Be many years.
Yeah. It's more to cover the yearly fee for the pickup.
It's to cover Joy's work on it, and it's, what we spent on this, it will be many, many, many years before we repay ourselves back.
It was $16,000, right?
Something like that. So this is actually just to sort of cover some of the staff fees.
Of course, staff expenses, I missed the call.
Yeah, staff expenses regarding the, what, the management of it?
The process of mailing out and getting it back and take some time.
So reduce it to 104 then, divided by five?
That's why it's in front of the board.
Because we think that 520 is the right number still?
Right. We, I can't remember how we even came up with that. We went through such an exercise that I, you got a good memory on that, Matt?
I don't have a precise memory, but there was a negotiation between the board and the property owners. I don't recall how that number was arrived at, but that number was, as I recall, lower than where the village started.
Yeah.
It wasn't really deemed to be a number that realistically was going to fully repay the village for its expenses. So I think there was a desire to at least attempt to recoup some of the administrative costs associated with providing the dumpster area.
So what's your recommendation, Mike?
I think I just leave the 520 at this point. But I do think at some point, we should revisit it and raise it at some point, and maybe even go back and look to see what, you know, what it all cost us. But I don't, I almost didn't bring this back to the boards. I know you're so tired. How am I said the wrong word there? Of dealing with this. But I really thought because we're adding somebody, and I wanted to just make sure you're still okay with the 520. I just leave the 520 at this point and add, and I will add Charlie's. We'll correct that, that page. So I'm okay with it.
Do we need a motion for that?
We do.
I would so move.
Okay, so the motion is to amend the downtown dumpster agreement to add additional user and leave the cost the same at 520, and basically divide by five instead of four. So any discussion?
Paul's second for discussion.
I'm trying to get this done. Nothing. Just me trying to go too fast. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks.
Thanks, man.
Item C, discussion, possible action, proposal from Elers to complete the capital improvement financing plan. There's a note. The water utility will pay $1,000 of the analysis. Sewer utility would pay $2,000, and general fund will pay $4,500.
So moved. Second.
Question, discussion, or comments from staff?
This will be helpful. This is what Jim Mann will be coming in, I think it's March. I have it on that. March 7th.
Okay.
That's, well, now I'm thinking that may be kind of tight, but we'll see. We'll see.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And D, discussion, possible action, approval of People's United Methodist Church facility use request form in the amount of $600 for four elections in 2016. That's the same fee as 2015.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
See, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, discussion, possible action, point 2016, 17 election workers?
So moved.
Second.
These are people that applied to serve in a voluntary capacity, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, we in good shape numbers-wise?
We're never in good shape.
We always need more.
We always need more. We need you.
Keep in mind that Darlene and Eric are on here.
We've been trained.
Sorry, I couldn't do this.
Right?
Right.
Okay, we have motion and second, right?
Yes.
To approve the election workers. All in favor?
So can I legally vote on this if I'm on this?
Absolutely. Absolutely, Eric.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item F, discussion, possible action, authorize staff to send